Thank you all. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of March twentieth, twenty twenty-five at exactly six P. M. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Here.
Councilwoman Leonard will be absent tonight. Vice Mayor Langowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present. Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution. One nation, founded on liberty and justice for all.
It's seated. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gleason, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call. Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard, absent. Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response if necessary. Any follow-up will be handled by staff at a later time. Madam Clerk.
May I receive no public comment cards?
Do we have any public comments from the audience at this point? No? Okay. Presentations and proclamations. Bear with me. Bicycle Month. Women's History. Stand by, we've got lots of proclamations today. Here we are. Let's Move Palm Beach County. This was sponsored by Vice Mayor, and I will now read it into the record. Declaring March twenty twenty-five Let's Move Palm Beach County Month, the City of Westlake takes special notice and acknowledges exceptional organizations that help residents who live, work, and play within the jurisdiction. And whereas in 2010, Digital Vibes was founded to reach out to underserved youth in Palm Beach County by empowering them through dance, fitness, technology, and the arts. And whereas Digital Vibes partners with the Palm Beach Health Foundation annually to host the Let's Move Commit to Change Physical Activity Challenge, a countywide initiative that focuses on physical activity, nutrition, healthy behaviors. And whereas Digital Vibes, Inc. and Palm Beach Health Foundation present the annual challenge which takes place annually from March first through the thirty-first and encourages individuals within and beyond Palm Beach County to take charge of their health by participating in fun fitness exercises. And whereas the Let's Move Initiative was originally introduced on a national level by First Lady Michelle Obama in 2010 with the goal of decreasing childhood obesity throughout the United States due to the fact that nearly one in three children in the United States are overweight or obese. And if this problem persists, persists, one-third of all children born in 2000 or later will suffer from diabetes at some point in their lives or will face other obesity-related health problems such as heart disease, high blood pressure, asthma, and cancer. And whereas Digital Vibes and the Palm Beach Health Foundation invite all residents to take the challenge to move by forming teams, registering online, committing to exercising for at least thirty minutes a day and throughout the month of March and logging their minutes on the Let's Move website, www.letsmovepbc.org. In 2012, Palm Beach County logged a hundred thousand minutes in the first year of the challenge, and we have met the challenge each year since, rising in 2023 to over one hundred million minutes logged. Now, therefore, I, John Paul O'Connor, Mayor of the City of Westlake, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month and urge all citizens to join us in moving to improve their fitness, mental health, and overall health. Reading that proclamation was exercise in itself. So I'm excited to proclaim Let's Move Palm Beach County Month. Next, we have before us also sponsored by our Vice Mayor, Florida Bicycle Month. Whereas the City of Westlake residents and visitors engage in bicycling as a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and excellent form of physical activity and recreation. And whereas the State of Florida designates March as Bicycle Month, and Palm Beach County will recognize it locally. Whereas Florida Bicycle Month features a number of fitness opportunities and events for riders of all ages to enjoy throughout the month in various parks and locations throughout Palm Beach County. And whereas the recognition of Florida Bicycle Month will raise awareness of bicycling and ultimately promote physical activity and healthy lifestyles by elevating bicycling as more of a widely accepted choice of transportation. Whereas the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency plans and recommends projects to make bicycling more accessible and promotes comprehensive community education efforts aimed at improving bicycle safety. And whereas Palm Beach County has an ever-expanding designation, designated or enhanced bicycling lane network with over two hundred and fifty miles of existing and seven hundred and forty-five miles of planned facilities to create a safe, connected system of bicycle infrastructure. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Westlake, assembled in regular session this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty-five, that the month of March in the City of Westlake is hereby proclaimed Florida Bicycle Month. Be it further proclaimed by the City of Westlake that this proclamation is duly sealed, ribboned, and executed by the members of this council, the foregoing proclamation was sponsored by Honorable Vice Mayor Greg Langowski, and upon unanimous consent of the council, the mayor declared the proclamation duly enacted. Excellent. Next, we have, uh, Women's History Month. Declaring March twenty twenty-five Women's History Month. Whereas in nineteen eighty-seven, the United States Congress named the month of March as Women's History Month in special recognition of the many contributions women have made to our country's history and heritage. And whereas the City of Westlake is proud to join in on the celebration of Women's History's Month and the twenty twenty-five theme Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. Recognizing women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunities, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role women and history play has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and the study of American history. Now, therefore, behalf of the City of Council and the people of the City of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, Mayor of the City of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby officially proclaim and recognize March as Women's History Month. Be it further proclaimed by the City of Westlake that this proclamation duly sealed, ribboned, and approved by the members of this council, the foregoing proclamation was sponsored by Councilwoman Charlotte Leonard, and upon unanimous consent of the council, the mayor declared the proclamation duly enacted. All right. Women's History Month. And last, but certainly not least, we have before us proclamation twenty twenty-five dash zero four, honoring former Councilman Julian Martinez, which I will now read into the record. Julian? Okay.
Stop, Julian.
All right. Whereas the City Council of the City of Westlake, Florida, desire to formally express the appreciation of Julian Martinez, who has served the City of Westlake in a dedicated manner. And whereas Julian Martinez, serving as council member, made excellent and constructive contributions to the City of Westlake. And whereas Julian Martinez's contribution to our city have been marked by advocacy for affordable housing and championing community initiatives. And whereas Julian Martinez was selected to serve the residents of the City of Westlake as a member of the City Council on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas this time of service has been marked with one of dedication for the best interest of the development of the community. Whereas it is fitting for formal recognition of his time and efforts to serve the community. The City Council, as well as our citizens, we express sincere gratitude for a job well done. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, Mayor of the City of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby officially proclaim appreciation to Julian Martinez for his service to the community. And further, I call upon the residents of the City of Westlake to join me in this declaration of appreciation to Julian Martinez for his service and wish him continued success in all of his life's pursuits.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the council, the state. Appreciate everyone's support and everything they've been able to back up that we did for the city. Staff's recommendation, everything that we've done, supported. Um, council gives direction, staff gets it done. It's a group effort. So it's not one of the others, team effort, and look forward to what we produce.
You can still come visit from time to time.
Yes, sir.
Your fingerprints will be on this city forever. It's a beautiful thing. Hey. All proclamation done.
We have here a... Before us, the topic of the magazine Westlake Living. We have Ms. Carla Lynn. Please come forward.
Hi. Can I just kind of turn and raise everybody?
Sure.
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Carla Lynn, and my, as I said, the publisher of the magazine, along with my partner in life and in business, Stephen Lynn, who's sitting right there. And we're very excited about the magazine. The inaugural issue was delivered last week. You should have all gotten it. If someone didn't get it, we'll be out there at the end of the evening, at the end of the meeting, and you can tell us you didn't get it. And we'll take your information and find out why. Westlake Living is a monthly magazine, and it's also a family magazine. And you'll hear me say the word "family" a lot of times because that's really what I think is the best description of it. It's a monthly magazine, and actually, we just finished proofreading April. So I'll be able to tell you a little about what's coming in April. We are a part of Best Version Media. I don't know if you've heard of them, but Best Version Media started in two thousand and seven with six magazines, and they delivered two hundred thousand about magazines that year. This year, there's over fourteen hundred Best Version Media community magazines like Westlake Living, and this year, they will deliver fifty-six million magazines across the U.S. and Canada. So it's quite a substantial company. Like every, um, Best Version Media magazine, we have a picture of a family on the cover. And the family of the first cover was the Johnsons. They were very brave to volunteer, and I understand it was a great experience. The kids loved it, the parents loved it, the grandparents can't wait to get copies of the magazine. I have extra copies for them. And if you would like to be a feature family, let me just show you what it involves. We have a photographer that will make arrangements to come at a time and place of your mutual acceptance agreement, I should say. And there's no cost to you. If you choose to buy copies of the photographs, that's up to you. There's no obligation. Then you'll get a questionnaire to fill out about your family. We'll write the article. We'll send it to you for whatever changes you want and ultimately your approval. Nothing will be published without your approval. So, um, that's what's involved in it. It's a matter of, there is some time, but it's a lot of fun, and I hope that you'll want to join it, join our list. As a matter of fact, we already have four or five, I'm not sure, now on the list for future covers and feature family articles. So if you're interested, please get on the list as soon as possible because one issue out a week ago, and we already have a list of four or five people. So one of the comments that has come to me about the magazine is the size. Like every Best Version Media magazine, we begin with sixteen pages. And the way the magazine grows is by you. You have to tell us what you want in the magazine. What would you like to see? You have to give us content that we can write from. We don't expect you to be writers, but we expect you to help us figure out what you want. So one of the things we want is the sports section. And you'll see in the April issue that we have a sports article. Ideally, we would have several sports articles and maybe even a schedule of, you know, high school events or Little League schedule or whatever you want to give us. But what we have in the April magazine is an article about the Seminole Ridge Cheerleading Squad who went to Nationals for the first time. And the way we found out about them is Riley Weasel is a sixteen-year-old student, and she lives in Westlake, and her parents told us. Otherwise, we wouldn't know anything about it. We couldn't have gone to the school, and we couldn't have written about them in the magazine. So if you want your kids' sports or other activities in the magazine, just let us know, and we'd be happy to do it. We also want to include travel articles. So if you go somewhere that, and we all take pictures. If you go somewhere that you think would be of interest just to read about from other families or somewhere that other families might want to visit, please send it in, and we'll write about it, and then other people can see where you've been and what it was like. I saw one in another magazine of Best Version Media, and it was a family that wrote in about how they kept in shape on vacation. And I thought that was kind of interesting. So we're willing to do that. If you have a recipe you want to share, give it to us. Maybe you make something, and everybody always says, "Can I have that recipe?" We'll send it to us unless it's a family secret and you don't want to share it. If you're willing to share it, we're willing to print it. There's also a classified section, and there's two parts to the classified section. One is if you want to sell or give something away. It's a lot easier to do it within the community than to put it on Facebook or Craigslist or wherever else. And the second is a youth classified. And so they say that there's youth in the community that want to earn some money, mowing lawns, washing cars, walking dogs, or babysitting. The babysitting part is my favorite because if you have children, you like to know who's taking care of them, and it's a babysitter. So if you see an ad for a babysitter, you know they live in Westlake. You can find out about, if you don't know them, you can find out about the family and the kid, the child that was going to be babysitting your kids. And on the other side, if you are the parents of the babysitter, you know where they're going. So there's a lot of safety on both sides, and it's truthfully a win-win. So that's, and there's no charge for that. Actually, there's no charge for any content in the magazine except for the business ads, which of course is how we pay for the magazine. So if you're a business owner and you're interested in advertising and you haven't already, see me, I'll be out there, or there's information on how to contact us. And one thing that distinguishes us from other avenues of advertising in print is that we also do digital ads. So it's a pretty full program. Let's see what else. By the way, we have a Westlake Living Facebook page, and I'd really love it if you would all join it. We will post things on the Facebook page that happen in the community. You can post things that you want, and we made our first post last night. I don't know if you know Garrett and Alisa, who have Dex Level Infusion, but last night, they were selected as the top weight control company in Palm Beach County. And so they posted it on Facebook. I shared it on the Westlake Living site. And that's the kind of thing that's just interesting to know, and it doesn't have to wait for a magazine, although we'll probably put it in the next magazine if we have room. So please visit the Facebook page, and please let us know if there's anything that you can think of that you'd like in the magazine or that you'd like to contribute. And again, I want to say, family, we're all about families. You won't see anything about politics. You won't see anything about drugs. You won't see anything that you wouldn't want any member of your family to read and that would cause an argument at the dinner table. So... Are there any questions? Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we have the consent agenda. This section of the agenda consists of routine administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless a council member requests such, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda. If there's no discussion, may I have a motion?
Move to per.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call. Councilwoman Gleason. Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
We have before us Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five. This is quasi-judicial, a resolution for the Platte of Westlake West, City Attorney. Please read by title.
Yes, sir. Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, proving the Platte of Westlake West subdivision, sections one, two, three, and twelve, Township forty-nine, forty-three, South Range, forty East, and Sections five and six, Township forty-three, South Range, forty-one, East. City of Westlake, Palm Beach County, Florida, being in part a reply of the following: A portion of track OST number one, and all of track OST number two, Persimmon Boulevard West, Platte two, Platte Book one thirty-four, Page one sixty-four through one sixty-six inclusive. And a portion of Town Center Parkway, FPL Westlake Solar Energy Center, Platte Book, Page Book one twenty-six, Pages twenty-four, twenty-five, Public Parkers, Palm Beach County, Florida, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any staff comments or presentations?
All those individuals going to testify during the course of this proceeding, please stand and be sworn. You solemnly swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Please proceed.
Should we disclose any quasi?
Yes, sir.
I mean, any ex parte?
I have none.
I have none as well.
None here.
None.
Where's my presentation from someone?
From the applicant, sir.
I'm going to leave it there. Can you, oh. All right, I'm going to leave it there. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Zoe. What'd you say?
Let's take it out.
You need holding it.
We'd like to see.
Why don't? Why is this so complicated tonight? For the record, my name is Tara Dewey. I'm the president of Louis Lamanu Walker, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mentho PBLH LLC. If you could move to the next slide. Oh, do I have the clicker? Gosh, it's so high-tech here.
Down. Yep, the down hair.
The down hair.
There we go. There's our project team, which Mr. Herring is usually the one who does this part and much more eloquently at this point than I have, but nonetheless. Don Herring of Cotler &amp; Herring is with me tonight. The plat was prepared by GeoPoint Surveying and Mapping and in conjunction with Baraco and Associates. And as I mentioned, I am with Louis Lamanu Walker. Because we have some new council people, Mr. Councilperson Gleason, welcome to the show. Welcome to your first plat review, and your city attorney will let you know if I go astray. But this is a technical review only for compliance with existing city and statutory criteria. It is a boundary plat that we have prepared in conjunction with Sixtieth Street Right-of-Way Dedication, which will happen at some point in the near future. If the application complies with the published criteria approval, it is non-discretionary and must be granted as your staff has opined. It does meet the technical criteria and all city criteria in your code. So we are looking forward to your approval tonight, and if you have any further questions, you can ask them of Mr. Herring as he prepares the plat and is here to present.
Thank you very much, Tara. It's good to see Tara here. For the record, Donaldson hearing here tonight on behalf of Mentho PBLH LLC. And as Tara said, we are here to talk to you about the plat of really what is the majority of the western area of the City of Westlake. The majority of this plat is located west of Seminole Pratt Whitney, and the whole intent here is to kind of plat those lands that have not been plotted. So of course, you've seen, if you've reviewed the staff report, the, this plat goes around what was the FPL, what is the FPL Energy Facility. And so we're just plating all of these smaller pieces of land into one large piece of land, which is something that we're required to do pursuant to the statutes. So it's cleaning things up. The total plat is about seven hundred and twelve acres and change. There's one small portion that goes to the east in the very, it basically would be the, what you would consider the northwest corner of the, of the, of the east part of Westlake, just east of the meadows. But everything else is to the west and generally west of what we refer to as the M-two, the Sid Canal that runs to the north and south, the primary drainage feature here in the, in the city. So this map is the overall graphic. So this would include what is identified as parcel F, just east of the, of the hammocks, parcel E, and then everything that's generally west of and including the M-two canal area all the way down to the southern limits of the city. And it wraps all the way around what we refer to as the FPL Energy Center. As, as pointed out by Ms. Dewey, this is setting the stage for the future dedication of Sixtieth Street, which is a part of our requirements with Palm Beach County. This is a broad graphic that gives you an idea of what's of the area that's included. This is a plat. So a plat is a technical document. It includes legal descriptions and then, and, and technical certifications. And whenever parcels are being dedicated, if they are being dedicated, it provides a, a, a dedication language as to what, where, and why it's being, being dedicated. It's signed by the city, Seminole Improvement District, and the mayor. And this image that's on the screen will probably be the last one that I'll, that I'll show you because you don't want to go through the entirety of the plat. But this is, generally represents the overall boundary of the plat. And so it goes all the way around the FPL Energy Facility, all the way south to the south part of the city. And then there's a portion of it that goes, a small portion of it that goes east of Seminole Pratt Whitney, all the way up there in the northeast corner here on the east side of Seminole Pratt Whitney. Your staff has reviewed this. It goes through and has to meet the requirements of the Florida statutes from a technical perspective. They have confirmed that it is substantially complete and meets those criteria. I believe it's been reviewed and approved by Seminole Improvement District. And so we would request that you approve this evening, this, this plat this evening. Be more than happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from council?
No, I already met with them.
Yes. Mr. Warner.
Either as a hearing or your attorney, the boundaries on the northwest and south, the north would be Sixtieth. Does that go to the center line? Or is all of Sixtieth within the City of Westlake?
It's all of Sixtieth, right?
I, I believe it's all of Sixtieth Street. They might be adding some right-of-way to it, but the majority of Sixtieth Street is coming from this, this property.
And then the southernly boundary looks like that Sycamore?
That is, it runs along the right-of-way of Sycamore, which is a part of acreage. The acreage that grumps, goes all the way up to Indian Trail Improvement District's right-of-way.
So the city, this boundary, does that encroach into the public right-of-way?
It does not. That's right.
And then on the west side?
The, the same.
Future public road there?
I do not, there's some canal access roads, but I do not believe there's a future public road there. So the only future public road that we're aware of is Sixtieth Street, which runs all the way out and will provide access to the GL site.
Correct. And from what you're saying, the majority of that right-of-way was in, will be in the city.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open a public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public? Madam Clerk.
I receive no public comment cards, mayor.
Let's close the public hearing. If there's no further discussion, I would love to entertain a motion.
I have a question for the attorney, for our attorney.
Okay.
Uh, in the presentation, it was...
In the presentation, it was indicated that as long as this plat complies with the statutory requirements, we must approve it. Is that correct?
Florida law considers a ministerial act. Yes, sir.
So, was the public hearing really a requirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But you, you're not the first one to ask such a question.
I'm just curious. All right, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I'll move approval of the resolution for the plat of Westlake West, number two thousand twenty-five dash zero five, as recommended by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Vice Mayor Lingowski. Roll call, Vice Mayor Lingowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Werner?
Yes.
Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
We have before us DOM dash twenty twenty-five dash zero one, application of Westlake Palms LLC requesting a development order modification. City Attorney, please swear in any witnesses, and Lex disclose any ex parte.
Please raise your right hand, be sworn. All those individuals testified during the course of this proceeding, please swear that you have not participated in any ex parte communications that are bound, tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
I have participated in ex parte communications with the applicant.
I have not.
I have not. I have not.
Okay. Do we have an applicant, a presentation?
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor, council members. For the record, Los Neeleone City Planner for the city of Westlake. Before you is application DOM twenty twenty-five zero one, Westlake Palms Development Order Modification. General location of the site, the applicant is requesting a development order modification to the previously approved conditions of approval, specifically one condition. The site is approximately one point three acres with future land use of downtown mixed use and the mixed use zone in district. The request, again, is to amend one condition of approval. The condition reads, the selection of artwork shall be approved by the city council prior to issuance of a, of a building permit. The applicant is modifying this condition to read, the selection of the artwork shall be approved by city council prior to the CO. The applicant shows to provide artwork on site. The Arts and Public Places Advisory Board shall review this artwork and recommend to the city approval, denial, or approval of conditions of the selection and location of the artwork according to the standards of the APP ordinance. The applicant has provided justification statement. The applicant says the design process is taking longer than anticipated, and is requesting to prolong the process for the selection of the artwork. Again, some background of the site. On April second, twenty twenty-four, council approves the F-one parcel, and subsequently approved SPR twenty twenty-four oh three, which is the site plan for the subject site, ten thousand four hundred square feet of man building with outdoor seating, and you can see with the arrow, with the location of the artwork. Staff has no objections to the applicant's request. I has recommended the following conditions. The selection of the artwork shall be approved by council prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, and all previous established conditions of approval remain in effect as approved previously in the development order SPR twenty twenty-four oh three. Thank you.
Just to be clear, there's, there's precedent for this already. This is very similar to what we did with James Business Park, where we, we gave them their permit.
Correct. Condition of James Business Park was exactly the same conditions as this.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would this applicant be eligible for a temporary CO? I'm just trying to qualify.
Right.
We're gonna require it to be.
So, the issuance, the issuance of the, the TCO is by the building department. For the perspective of planning and zoning, we don't really sign off on TCO, so the building department is the one that issues the TCOs. Our input will come at the CO stage. So, I, to answer your questions, I think it will be allowed to issue a TCO.
So, just for clarification, so.
Understood.
They potentially get a temporary CO, but they're gonna need to comply with the NOMA before they get to CO.
Yeah. That's a possibility.
Sure.
The Arts and Public Places Ordinance gives the developer the option of either providing a contribution to the fund or to, or prepare artwork subject to this approval process.
Correct.
Under this scenario that we're looking at, will the applicant have an option to not do the artwork and provide a financial, a funding contribution?
Only if the council approves the change to, to be changed to provide the fund, the original approval has already been conditioned to provide the artwork on site, so it will have to be approved by council.
So, they would have to come back and request another change to the development order?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a applicant presentation on the potential artwork he plans on submitting, which I can't wait to see?
We do. For the record, Donaldson hearing here tonight on behalf of Westlake Palms LLC, some of our partners are here in the audience, and we are very excited to move forward and looking for your approval tonight, as we would like to pour the foundations on, on Monday, is that right? Friday, we'd like to pour the foundations on Friday, if we have your approval this evening. I'll skip over what, what Ozdale went forward. So, basically, you know, what we're, what we're asking is, is a little bit more time to have the art approved by the Art and Public Places Board. We have a relatively small building, and I've always known that the intent of this council is you'd like to see the art put on site rather than just taking the easy way out and striking a check, which we're happy to do. And so because of the fact that this, you know, the art is not a significant dollar amount, we've had challenges getting artists lined up to, to develop the design to move forward. We have selected Mark Fuller. Mark Fuller is a well-known artist. If you've been in Palm Beach Gardens, his work is well-known. He did the molecule out in front of the, I call it the UTC Building with the Carrier Building. He's, you know, he's done a number of things in Royal Palm Beach, if you was, you know, at the corner of Okeechobee and Royal Palm, so he's a, you know, he's an artist and, you know, happens to be, you know, someone that we have a lot of respect with. So, Mark is working on that design. We just need a little bit more time so we can get it before the board. You know where the site is, and so we are very excited about moving forward here. Pretty quickly, Tractor Supply, looks like they're getting pretty close to opening, and we want to be able to follow them fairly quickly. Ozdale showed you our site plan. There's no changes in the site plan. We're moving forward. This is the, the building, just to remind you what the building looks like. I truly believe it's going to be the nicest building that's been in, built in Westlake yet, and I can tell you, our construction costs tell us the same thing, so it's gonna be a very, very nice building, and we're really excited about it. So, we had, we're proposing to integrate the, the art into or behind our signage element. And so this is what the sign is that was approved as a part of the master signage plan, and what we're looking at doing is a, is a very, very large element that would be made out of a, an aluminum or stainless steel that would then be powder coated with a, with a, with a brilliant paint that would look like a palm coming, coming out of the ground. So, Mark, so this is a pretty, you can see the scale of it as it relates to the person standing there. This has to come before your board and your AIP, your, you know, your AIP board, and you will see it again. So, but just to tell you that we, you know, we are, we are working on it, and, and we just need a little bit more time so we can complete it and get it back before you. So, as far as the building is concerned, our goal is to complete what we would refer to as the shell sometime in August. They're telling me August, sometime in August, and then our tenants will begin to come in and pull their tenant interior build out, and they will probably take to the end of the year before you actually see a tenant opening in, in there. It takes a long, a long time, so.
You think by the end of this year?
Yeah, I, I hope so. Hopefully, you'll be able to have coffee and a sandwich in Ellis Cafe, so.
All right.
We're very, very excited about that. So, with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions and looking forward to moving forward and being on your tax rolls so that you have more revenue for your residence.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Do we have any questions?
Pardon?
You're recognized.
So, this is your concept?
This is just a, this is a concept, that's.
What is, I didn't hear.
Oh, it is a, it is a palm sprouting out of the ground. So, it's a, it's a, it's about seven, eight feet tall, and it's a palm that just sprouts out of the ground. It's very organic. Again, the, the project is called Westlake Palms. Of course, there'll be a lot of palms used in the landscape, and it was just kind of, kind of fun, so.
It's powder-coated metal.
Powder-coated metal, yeah, yep. And Mark's, Mark Fuller's beautiful body of work.
Oh, yeah.
If you've, if you, you know, been in Palm Beach Gardens, you know, so we're really excited about it.
So, would that be like any enamel finish to it?
Yes, it would be a, it would be a, a very, like an airplane type of a coating onto, onto the metal that also is iridescent. So, it'd be an iridescent finish.
Does it light up?
It will be illuminated, yes. It doesn't light up internally, it'd be illuminated from the ground.
Externally, right.
Yeah, yeah, we'll put a, there'll be LED, LED light in the ground to illuminate it. So, you know, we're excited, we, we're really excited to see the James Business Park art opening up, and, you know, we've been encouraging some of the other big developers that you'll be seeing coming in, in the next few months to also try to do art, because it's easy to write a check, but it's, you know, it's, you know, having things that are interesting and diverse and have a story, I think, is something that could be really special for the city in time.
How much would the check be if you weren't writing?
If we, we'd be one percent of vertical constructions, so it'd be what, sixteen thousand dollars? About sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay. And to do this, is less or more?
Well, we're, it'll, considering the fact that we have to write checks to get it all approved, it'll end, it'll end up being, it'll be, end up being more.
Okay.
So, we're, we're excited, you know, it's, we want to be a part of the city and, and add some extra value.
I think it's very cool.
So, thank you very much.
I do have one more question, Mr. Herring. One more question. You're still planning and keeping Palm Bron that's on the side of the building?
Yes, yes.
Something to make sure not.
Yeah, no, that's, that's signage. That's the logo.
Something to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm glad you like it. It's noticeable. It's art itself.
So, I guess, Zoe, if you could schedule, start scheduling the Arts and Public Places.
Soon as we get a session.
You're not right here. Too awesome.
Got it. And then, and then we schedule, because also I want you to reach out, if you could, to James Business Park, see if they want to do some kind of official unveiling. Because I saw that that's a hundred percent done. Yeah, it looks beautiful. So, all right, where were we?
Entertain a motion to amend the development.
Well, we have to open up public hearing. And entertain any comments from the public?
I received no public comment cards, mayor.
Do we have any public comments? If not, I'll go ahead and close the hearing, and we just did council comments. I'm assuming we're all squared there, and if there's no further discussion, I would like to have a motion.
Motion.
Second. And that would be to approve the request to amend the development order.
With conditions.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion by Councilman Gleason, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Werner?
Yes.
Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingowski?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. We have before us Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six, appointing a voting delegate and a alternate voting delegate to the Palm Beach County League of Cities. City Attorney, read by title only for the record.
Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, appointing John Paul O'Connor, Greg Glencowski, Gary Warner, Eric Gleason, and Charlotte Leonard as city's voting delegate and alternates to the Palm Beach County League of Cities Inc., providing for conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Staff comments?
No comments.
I saw my little script here and stuff.
It's, it's what you end up having to do every year.
Historically, the mayor's always the voting delegate, and then what is it?
Vice Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, then it goes through the council, whoever actually is that.
Whoever, you only get one vote for, whoever's there can take care of it. Council discussion, Mr. Werner?
No.
Nothing? Are you sure?
I'll look further, I'll ask a question in a few minutes.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Vice Mayor Lingowski. Roll call, Councilman Werner?
Yes.
Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
We have before us Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, which is a public records exemption. City Attorney, if you could read by title and kind of shed some light on this?
Resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, urging the Florida State Legislature to enact legislation to provide a public records exemption for municipal clerks and employees who perform municipal elections work or have any part in code-enforced functions of the city and providing for an effective date.
Can you give us a little synopsis on what this kind of is? Or Madam Buck, if you want to?
Thank you, mayor. Many municipal staff who perform duties that include or result in investigations into complaints regarding election fraud, legal, legal enforcement of hearings related to neglect or abuse, or other activities that could lead to a criminal prosecution, are exposed to threats and other acts of violence. Municipal clerks often administer elections. Some election workers have been targeted for threats and violence due to the nature of materials they are responsible for. Further, clerks are often involved in legal enforcement proceedings and actions related to violations of codes and ordinances. Occasionally, these proceedings have led to retaliation and threats by defendants. So, the FACC, the Florida Association of City Clerks, is asking you to adopt a resolution in your municipality urging the Florida State Legislature to enact legislation to provide a public records exemption for municipal clerks and employees who perform municipal elections work or have any part in code enforcement functions for the city.
I am in favor. Do we have any comments from the council?
No comments.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero seven for the public records exemption.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Lingowski, seconded by Councilman Gleason. Roll call, Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Werner?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
All right. Let's go to City Council comments. Councilman Gleason, you're up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, this might be a little long one, since it's my first one, but good evening to the mayor, vice mayor, council members, and residents of Westlake. I want to first say that I'm honored to sit here at my first full council meeting since being appointed to serve seat two. It's been a privilege to step into this role, and I understand that it's a very large shoes to fill, but I look forward to working alongside each of you and shaping Westlake's bright future. One of the things that I did encounter over the past few weeks, and I'm looking for council support, is to increase our civic engagement. One of the requests that I had made was to utilize a city asset of a pop-up tent, and during that, that conversation with the manager, it was brought to my attention that we don't have a policy in place to allow individual council people to use city assets for him to be able to approve it. So, I was asking as a council if we could maybe, Mr. Mayor, if we could directly, city manager and the attorney to draw up some type of city policy to make it available to us, any type of asset that the city owns, and be forward-thinking, including not only pop-up tents, or not only chairs, or maybe in the future, we're gonna have a city hall or, you know, a community or something to that effect, but there, there obviously has to be some permitted uses and some restrictions put on it. So, some of the permitted uses would be something like community outreach events, town halls, education forums, civic engagement. As you can see, sometimes we have to go to them. We can't expect them to come to us every day, you know, every month, I mean, to the city, to the city council meeting. So I would like to go to them to be able to, the constituents to come to me and tell me what they expect of me and where they want to see our city go. So being able to do that, I think that some of the restricted uses that we would not be able to use them for, which should be included in the policy, would be political events, campaign activities, any type of endorsement, anything for personal financial gain, anything of that nature. And anything that does not directly relate to city services initiatives or public engagement. So that way, it's giving us a clear and transparent policy. We could have a sure, fair, and consistent use of city resources, and we will be able to better engage our constituents. So I was hoping that I could gain some support with this.
So, sorry, that, fantastic, thank you. You wanted to borrow the 10 by 10 tent?
Yes.
For what reason again?
I was going to do a civic engagement event, I'm kind of coming to me and tell me what's going on in the city, what they want to see and how they want to see the city.
Ken said, no, you can't have the tent.
We don't have a policy.
We don't have a policy.
You're not allowed to.
It was not his fault.
The only, the only thing we have a policy for now is we use it at the events where we have a city presence.
Yeah, I'm not at all opposed to creating a policy to let us borrow the tent if we need to borrow the tent or chairs or anything, I think it's pretty, it's a pretty easy lift. My council agree?
I have a comment, something as, I was, after meeting with each of the candidates and discussing the candidates of the election from the open seat, and engaging with those citizens and saying they don't feel that we're out there and up with them to talk. So I'm running into the issue, because I was going to announce the time that I'm actually going to meet, but we don't own anything. So anything has to be approved by Minto. And I've been trying to get use of the adventure park, the parking lot, but it's their land. And we may even have to give permission, and it's kind of like, maybe it's too political because it's a city council member. So that's where I'm, I'm actually having a problem, so.
Yeah, so one of the suggestions that I had and that I was looking forward to is being a resident of orchards, I started to look at our rules and regulations from the green space in every community. And as a resident of orchards, I'm allowed to utilize that green space. So I reached out to the president and the HOA board over there, asking them for their permission. So I'm waiting on that email back. But I think if we were able to reach out to the HOA presidents of each individual location and ask if we could use their green space, or even get a resident to sponsor us to use their front yard, we could, we could do it in each community. And that was my idea of how I, I wanted to engage the community.
So if there's no opposition, I'd like to instruct staff to create a policy that allows for using of city assets in order for civic engagement.
Right.
And I think that's a wonderful idea. Should be a relatively easy lift. Right?
Get rid of your hot crap.
Okay. What else you got for us?
Sorry. Sorry. All right. One of the other things that I spoke about during my interviews and everything else was lighting standards. And I had the privilege of meeting with our planning section along with our engineer and our city manager, talking about our current lighting standards within the city. We had a great conversation today. We are going to look at making some tweaks and maybe possibly bringing some forward, some changes to it. But one of the reasons for this was I wanted to be forward-thinking. It's important to note that as council, we cannot limit or refuse commercial establishments solely based on their type of business, but we can ensure that our ordinances and codes align with the city's expectations for maintenance, safety, and aesthetics. A stronger lighting standard will allow us to ensure consistent and high-quality lighting in commercial areas, maintain safe, well-lit public spaces for both residents and businesses, and reduce light pollution while keeping our community visually appealing. So this is just one step of ensuring that future commercial developments enhance the character of Westlake rather than detract from it. So I just wanted to bring that forward and thank the city staff for participating in that. And I look forward to bringing up to, you know, some changes to council.
So what, what is the, what is the ask? To instruct staff to bring?
There is no, there's no ask at this point, they're going to review it. And they're, they took my recommendations at this point, and then they're going to, they're going to compare what we currently have to what.
What we could potentially have.
Potentially have.
All right, perfect.
Bring it back to, to, to council.
Thank you, thank you for that initiative.
And after that, in closing, thank you to my fellow council members and the residents of Westlake for their support and committed to transparency, collaboration, and thoughtful planning as we continue shaping the future of our city. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Gleason. I think that's a hit the ground running. What we like to see here, no, I love it. Phenomenal. Councilman Werner?
Thank you, I'd first like to welcome Councilman Gleason to the team here. Look forward to your input tonight as, well as future thoughts come up. The only other thing I have, Mayor and council members, is a request for proclamation next month to recognize the days of remembrance, also known as Yom Ashoah, acknowledging and remembering the extermination of many people during the Holocaust. That would be for the month of April.
I think that would be fun, don't you think? Good, good. Done. Vice Mayor?
Okay. Next month, we're going to have a presentation by the Education Advisory Board Chair. That agenda was just posted today for our April 1st meeting. So we'll have a presentation by the Education Advisory Board. And also, in light of the conversation we were having, I'm going to start hosting monthly conversations with the Vice Mayor. That will start on the 5th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. For my first time until I get final approval to have it somewhere located, you know, on this side of the street, it's going to be at the Starbucks outside patio. And the first one will be on the April 5th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Spring Fest is April 5th, I forget. I don't know what time that starts, but that's why I'm doing Spring Fest.
And it's time for any citizens to come out, tell me your thoughts, ideas that you're having. But also, I also want to make an announcement that I am very accessible. Anybody who knows me, my cell phone is on the website, my email's on the website. You can call me anytime, text me, I'll respond. So just so you know that all that information is also on the website. And I also have business cards if you need that after the meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think that's a, it's a wonderful initiative. I love it, I think it's great. Again, I want to just welcome our new council member. Thank you, I, I love what you're bringing to the table. And I think this is going to be a nice, a nice group to work with. I think we're doing, we're going to do very well here. I just have a couple of things. The RFP for the planning of the school, the Westlake School, is going out from the school board. And that's for the elementary school and for the design services. I thought it would be a really good idea if you could get somebody from the Education Advisory Board to kind of liaison with the school board and help influence, or at least get ideas or show ideas on what that planning might look like. I'm told that the school's being built solid year or two early. So if they're, they're going out, you know, they're starting to plan the school, let's try to get somebody liaising with them from either yourself or from the board and, you know, have some influence on what that school looks like that's going to be in our city.
Sure. Is that one of our segments?
Yes.
Yes.
It will be an elementary school. As I spoke with the, the administrative building team, just to get a little update, they told me it's going to commence next August.
Yeah.
Or start in 2027, school year, August. That's when the elementary school will be opened.
It's going to be great.
They're working on, it's going to be a new design that the school district has never done. So it won't be a prototype elementary school, but it's going to be at that location ran between the groves.
Yeah.
Sky Cove. And that will commence, and they're going to work on design and then future a name.
Yeah, see if, see if we can get a seat at the table in the, in the design aspect of it, at least. You know, offer our ideas or our influence.
We can bring it up, our Education Advisory Board also meets on April 10th again as a group, so we'll bring it up there as well.
Good. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And then I have one other thing. So our code requires golf cart parking, and it's labeled in our code as LSEV, which is low-speed electric vehicle. I know I've brought this up before, I know we've given staff direction before. I don't know why it hasn't happened, but nobody knows what LSEV stands for. I know you know what it stands for, but nobody else does. And, you know, they might think it's a motorcycle, they might think it's something else, but we need to either change our code or amend our code so that it doesn't say LSEV. It needs to say golf cart parking, or cart parking, or something that's, you know, makes sense that people know what it is. So I'm once again asking staff to please actually amend our code.
We ought to be able to find it better now. Yes, with me, the code will make it easier to find the exact section to modify.
And does the code allow for just painting on the?
Yes.
On the concrete? All right, well, let's have them paint a picture of a cart.
That's.
You know, so they, people know what it is. Please. So. The, the, the code has that language, but there's not, there's no stopping the developer to put up a sign, a different sign that says otherwise. I know, but we all know they're going to do the bare minimum, just to get, just to get their CO.
We can, we can add the fact that in addition to any markings on the ground, that a sign be erected in front of us, that there's golf carts. LSEV slash golf carts slash whatever.
With a cart. Forget LSEV. We, nobody's ever going to know what that is, ever. Let's just make it have a picture of a golf cart. We can do it. I think that would be fantastic. Yeah, because, you know, there's a, as a, as a degree where you have to start using common sense for some of these things. And I love the fact that we have dedicated golf cart parking. I championed for it for a very long time. We have it, but now it's there and nobody knows what it is. So let's get some signs that say golf carts. On that, Spring Fest is April 5th. It's going to be a great, great celebration, and I'm told the Easter Bunny will be present, and there will be eggs to be found. So that being said, let's go to staff reports, that's all I got.
I don't see fire or BBSO here tonight.
We've got fire.
Fire's hiding. The chief didn't show up, come on. Yes.
Yeah, tell us what we got.
Evening.
Good evening.
Tom Parker, Battalion Chief. I'm in place of Chief O'Meara, she had another meeting to attend tonight. But all I have is brief, it's just for February's call volume. The city of Westlake, we had 33, or I'm sorry, 55 calls, 33 of those were medical in nature. The rest varied from fire alarms to fires. The average response time was under 6 minutes and 30 seconds, 6:19 to be exact. And the crews turned out an average of 53 seconds out of the station. If you have any questions, ask that.
Just want to say thank you for all you do, Chief.
No problem.
Do we have any questions or comments from anyone? No?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys. I know LT's not here.
Correct.
So let's move forward with the city attorney.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
City Manager?
Only briefly, one thing to add is remind the public that in the council manager form of government, if you have an issue with something that's going on in the operations side, it needs to come to the city manager prior to coming to the council. That's the process. Council is policy-driven, as was reported out this morning or this evening. The manager is the one responsible to make sure that the policies and operations happen according to practice. So if you've got an issue with anything, whether it's building department, whether it's something to do with street lighting, whether it's something to do with traffic signals or whatever, if you see it, report it to me, because if I don't know about it, I can't find a way to make it happen and get it fixed for you. And that's, that's the main thing, just run it through the right channels and then we'll operate better. That's all I have.
Thank you, City Manager. Let's open up for public comment. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium. And prior to adjusting the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response if necessary. Any follow-up will be handled by staff at a later time. Do we have anybody who wants to make public comment, or do we have any public comment cards?
No public comment cards, Mayor.
Mr. Isaacson?
Chad Isaacson, 15398 Goldfinch Circle. First, if you guys can get with the lodge to find out about the mics, because even when you talk into them, there's very little sound coming back out. Occasionally, I think when he was right up against it, you could hear it. Eric, or Mr. Gleason, Councilman Gleason, loved hearing what you had to say, because one of the big issues I think you had, I had, and a lot of residents had is transparency. Thank you for putting yourself out there to actually spend time with the residents of the community to find out what's going on. You, your newsletter's always been fantastic. So it's good to see and refreshing to see that you guys are really now starting to push out there with the residents. Two things, one, the bomb, or 60th. So I'm on Goldfinch North Side. That road, 60th, is going to be coming through. Have we had any conversations with Sid, because I understand it's not city property, about Minto building a bomb or Sid building a bomb to block those residents, all on the north side, from the sound of the road coming through? So that's one question. I will be sending this an email, because I know that a lot of people that you guys have spoke with said that we don't get response back from verbal questions from the city. So I know now everything has to be in writing in order, because any time I've emailed Zoe, I've always gotten a response. Any comments that people make in here, you usually don't get responded to, unless it's followed up. So I do want to kind of touch base on that. And then one other thing, as a, as a young city, still trying to grow, trying to be physically responsible with our finances, I understand there was a trip to DC. So I am going to be submitting a request to know what it was for, who, what was paid for, and how are we determining the ROI from that? And then individual emails to each one of you to say, what did you bring back to know that it was worth our while to spend tax dollars to send you guys there versus sending one as a representative? So that's all I've got, and like I said, I'll be sending it in the next few days via email so I can actually get a response back. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for your comments. Do you have any other public comment?
Anita Kaplan, 545 Santa Rosa Lane, Westlake. Also chair the Education Advisory Board. So I just have a couple of questions for clarification since we have that upcoming meeting. I usually call Greg, so I thought I'd get the, the questions out now. I want to be sure I have it correct. So you're saying the new elementary school begin in 2026, or this August?
27, construction will start.
Okay.
August. And then this, this, yes, no, I'm sorry. Construction will start in 26th of August, opening August 27.
2027.
I moved it up from 28.
And the big question for me is the question that always comes up at the committee meeting is what students can go to what schools? And the fact that there are a lot of students outside of Westlake that go to the schools. So we're going to try to find it, I'm going to, I've been speaking to Masha Andrews to see if she can give me some information on how many.
They have the results, kids.
Yeah, that are outside.
I spoke to Andrew's as well, and she's on it.
Yeah.
Do we know the capacity of the school?
No, it's a first design, so they're.
They haven't even signed it yet. They just sent out the RFP for the consultant to start the designing process.
Right, right, I don't think they would have a target to.
So my question is, which students would be allowed to go to that school? Do you have any sense of that yet? No.
No.
Because it's usually by location, I think, and the demarcations.
I would assume primarily Westlake students, but we, I can't, I can't.
But from the area of Westlake or another?
No, it's the entire city.
See elements.
Okay. All right, that's my question, so thank you.
Thanks.
Answer some.
Oh. That's exciting.
Once again, Tara Dewey of Lewis, Lomond &amp; Walker, on behalf of Tara Dewey of Lewis, Lomond &amp; Walker. Historically, when we were going through the initial phases of the city, this, the Golden Grove Elementary and the Western Heinz Middle School were both serving this, the property that is the city of Westlake was owned to use those schools. Shortly after the city came into being, I believe it was after, it might have been in the process, the school board, because of populations issues at Golden Groves, took our potential students out of Golden Groves and rezoned them elsewhere. took our potential students out of Golden Groves and rezoned them elsewhere. So we actually, on behalf of Minto, in concert with the city, did our best to keep that from happening for the benefit of the future residents that you are. So now that you are all here and you do have students, I would highly recommend that you go show your support to have that school, you know, your students attending that school. I will tell you as a little, you can find capacity information on all of the schools on the website, Palm Beach County. It's not the easiest thing to do, but if you're, if you're dedicated, you can dig around and pull up the school data, and it'll tell you the capacity over the next five years. Also, one of their criteria for attendance is walkability and lack of need for transportation. So you obviously have a very walkable community with golf cart access to a lot of the schools. So I think that's on your side for the future. But just some tips from me to you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the public? No? Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:09 PM.